I'd like to call the December 7th meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we begin our meeting this evening, let us take a moment to pause and remember the more than 280,000 Americans who have lost their lives to COVID-19 since the spring. While these numbers may seem like abstract statistics, we know that each of the people who have died was an individual with a unique story and people that cared about them. Let us hold a moment of silence to remember our fellow Americans who have passed away Thank you very much. I'd like to announce that we have parking validation and bus passes available for any members of the public who are attending this meeting. Anyone who would like to get their parking or transit pass validated may see the security officers on the way out. It's valid for today only. I want to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting. All right, we now come to the consent agenda and approval of the agenda. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? All right, is there a motion? I do, I'm getting at that. We would like to add an additional item under new business regarding code enforcement, which Michael Frew mentioned to us during the briefing meeting. Are there any objections to adding that code enforcement item to the agenda?
No.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to approve the agenda as published with the addition of the code enforcement item, which we'll take up as the final item under new business?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. So the first item up is public comments, and folks are going to be calling in and we'll be listening to their comments. And are we ready to go with that, Mr. Joyner?
Ethan, you're live?
And we've got 30 folks who are scheduled, so this is going to probably be around an hour or so.
Is it ready to go?
Yep.
One second, Nathan.
We're ready.
All right, you're good to go, Nathan. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Nathan Ramsey. I'm Executive Director of Land of Sky Regional Council and Director of Mountain Area Workforce Development Board. I appreciate you giving me this opportunity to speak to your Board today, and I encourage you to reach out to myself at Land of Sky if there's anything we can do to assist you and your staff. We're honored that Buncombe County is one of the 20 local governments in our region that is a member of Land of Sky Regional Council, and we're very grateful for your support. I'm here to read a resolution from the governing Board of Land of Sky Regional Council. Resolution in support of Pratt &amp; Whitney, whereas Fortune 50 Aerospace Company Pratt &amp; Whitney, a division of Raytheon Technologies Corporation, has announced they plan to locate a manufacturing facility in Buncombe County, and whereas Pratt &amp; Whitney is committed to invest in at least $650 million and hiring at least 800 workers by 2027 at an average wage of $68,000, and whereas Pratt &amp; Whitney will manufacture high-tech turbine airfoils to support commercial and military aviation, and whereas Pratt &amp; Whitney's workforce at their facility in Buncombe County will have a $54 million annual payroll, whereas over the course of 12 years economists at the North Carolina Department of Commerce estimate that this project could grow North Carolina's economy by $7.4 billion, and whereas the average annual wage at Pratt &amp; Whitney is, for those jobs, are about 60% higher than the region's average wage, and whereas this project will have a positive economic benefit for Western North Carolina, and specifically the Land of Sky Regional Council counties of Buncombe, Henderson, Madison, and Transylvania. Now therefore be it resolved by the Land of Sky Regional Council as follows, that the Land of Sky Regional Council supports this project due to the positive economic impact on our region, that this Board expresses our appreciation and support to Buncombe County government for their efforts to support this project, and this resolution shall be effective upon its adoption, adopted the December 2nd, 2020, on the second day of December. The Honorable Barbara Volk, Mayor of Hendersonville, Chairperson, Land of Sky Regional Council. Thank you very much.
Caller, you're live, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Kovaas. I am retired, small business owner, and former pilot and mechanic. Live in Rutherford County, and a lot of experience with Pratt &amp; Whitney is from the single-row radials up through the J-57 jet, which was the very first successful jet engine, and I'm familiar with them because of my experience in the Navy. And Pratt &amp; Whitney is known as premier aviation company, extremely highly respected around the world. They really do make dependable engines, and they're the gold standard in that respect. The engine that's going to be produced in Asheville is a quantum jump forward in terms of efficiency and lower emissions and noise reduction, as demonstrated at Farmborough in England recently, and it's going to be standard in several Airbus models, and the engine's going to be around for a long time, and Asheville is very fortunate to have the opportunity to pair up with this company, with this long track record of excellence, and it's a good deal for Asheville. So looking forward to seeing Pratt &amp; Whitney fly their flag there. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kent Jones. I live in Swanonoa. I'm a retired professor of teacher education. I was disappointed but not surprised when this commission, at its last meeting, ignored public comments and voted unanimously to grant tax incentives to Pratt &amp; Whitney, which is owned entirely by war profiteer Raytheon Technologies. No appeals to conscience of humanity, climate change, or murders in Yemen swayed you from a decision that appeared to be already made behind closed doors. The public explanation for your decision was that we need the jobs. Tonight I'd like to show you a better alternative for jobs in the hope that you will rescind your ill-conceived decision. In 2001, researchers at the University of Massachusetts Amherst produced a peer-reviewed report about the comparative effects of job creation between investments in the military-industrial complex on the one hand and clean energy, education, and healthcare on the other. The report's conclusion was straightforward and unequivocal. Quote, "Investments in clean energy, healthcare, and education create a much larger number of jobs across all pay ranges, including mid-range jobs paying between $32,000 and $64,000, and high-paying jobs paying over $64,000." In 2019, these findings were updated in a report from Brown University titled "War Spending and Lost Opportunities." Here is its conclusion. Including both direct and indirect jobs, the military creates 6.9 jobs per $1 million. While the clean energy industry and infrastructure each support 9.8 jobs, healthcare supports 14.3, and education supports 15.2. So for the same amount of spending, clean energy and infrastructure create 40% more jobs than the military, healthcare creates 100% more, and education 120% more. Please understand, Commissioners, that the common understanding that the defense industry is the source of the most and best jobs is false. If you are sincere about having made this decision in order to support our local economy, you should look again at how local tax incentives might better do that. Invest in your own local businesses, our own local businesses, not in a multinational corporation that relies on fossil fuels and perpetuates a war industry that is the scourge of the world. Thank you.
Caller, you're live.
Okay. Hello, I'm Rachel Bliss of Asheville. I want to welcome new members, Commissioners Terry Wells and Parker Sloan. Thou shalt not kill. The good book couldn't be more blunt. Maybe Commissioners won't be in the F-35 jets dropping bombs that kill or maim kids beneath them, but by giving bribes or incentives in the form of tax abatements for a decade is acting in complicity with Pratt &amp; Whitney, who want to make engine components here. Your hands will be a little less bloody, however, if you rescind last month's decision. I admit, all of us, to a certain extent, have bloody hands as taxpayers, but we don't have to spread out to welcome that to those who do it for profit. Now that I've mentioned the worst of who we are as accomplices in the brutal killing of innocent children in Yemen, Palestine, or Libya, let's take time to dream of better uses for tax forgiveness amounting to $2.6 million a year for at least a decade. We can use those funds to speed up our own alternative energy power systems here in our county, so we aren't dependent on whims of Duke Energy. We can start paying reparations to our brothers and sisters whose ancestors were enslaved for hundreds of years by forgiving taxes on small black-owned businesses, rewarding scholarships, or offering assistance for down payments on first homes. We can forgive taxes so more daycare centers can stay afloat, or we can forgive taxes on our struggling farms, farm-to-table farmers. I'm sure you can think of many other ways that this $27 million can be used to improve our county overall, rather than line the pockets of one of the richest war profiteers in the country. They don't need our tax forgiveness. They want it because they know they can get it. I call that bribery on your part, or blackmail on their part. Is this how capitalism and free enterprise is supposed to work? Does it work that way for small businesses in downtown Asheville, or Weaverville, or Black Mountain? If so, maybe their employees could get raises too, so they could do what they really want to do. So our county is complicit in killing innocent dark-skinned civilians and participates in corrupted and decadent enterprise that is anything but free. I call on Buncombe County Commissioners to rethink the--
Caller, you're live.
Hi, thank you so much. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Roberta Wall. I live in Asheville in Kenilworth, and first I wanted to welcome the new Commissioners, and I'm excited tomorrow, I think, to welcome the new city council. Really, really hoping that we're able to get some things done that I think we all agree need to be done here. And I specifically just wanted to say, on the matter of granting tax credits to whether it's real estate developers or Raytheon, that we really, really prioritize serving the community directly in the granting of tax credits. So specifically, for example, with Raytheon, if the county decides to go ahead with that, that in exchange for tax credits, that we tie it directly to reparations, that we tie it directly to environmental cleanup, to writing the, to addressing the wealth disparity. So for example, the tax credits will be given when Raytheon offers, I was thinking, 50% of the jobs to residents of the county, to people of color residents of the county. If Raytheon needs people to get specific training, that the tax credits are granted in exchange for the training, that the training program be done in conjunction with AV tech, for example. In other words, let's look at what are the priorities that we have voted in that we want and directly tie the tax credit to that. So that's what I wanted to say, and really wishing the Commissioners good luck in putting these tax credits directly in service of making Asheville the place that we want it to be, where there's equality in the distribution of resources and wealth. Thank you so much. I'm--
Caller, you're live.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Andrew Emery. I live in Woodfin, and I'd like to talk for just a brief moment about the proposed Raytheon plant. Having grown up here and lived here for a long time, a constant issue has been the nature and kind of lack of any manufacturing or professional jobs in the area. They're very limited and hard to come by. This plant moving to the area seems to offer a fair number of reasonably well-compensated positions that, you know, to me really is a net benefit to the area. I know there are some people that object to it because Raytheon, in some sectors, is a defense contractor. However, we are all Americans here, and we do live in a dangerous world, so I don't think that is a reason to oppose the plant. My only area of concern revolves around the river and access to it. I've had a grown-up here over in Bent Creek. I've gone in and out of Bent Creek River Park since I was a young man, young boy, and I know the proposed access to the site is very close to the park itself. It's a very busy park in the summer, and, you know, my concern is that the commission looks out for the people of Buncombe County and their ability to enjoy the French Broad River. That's really all I have to say, and I thank you for your time. Good evening.
Caller, you're live.
Hi, my name is Megan Sullivan, and I'm a resident of Buncombe County. At the last meeting, five out of seven of you voted yes on the Pratt &amp; Whitney Economic Development Plan, more accurately known as the Giveaway to Raytheon. Each and every one of you has had the audacity to sit and listen to 30 public comments and has yet to come, and has only come up with the worst short-sighted reasons to push this through without public consent. Our mountains are worthy of so much better than a Raytheon facility. People driving down the parkway would look out on the French Broad River and overlook and forever be reminded of how Buncombe County talks about reparations but sells out to warlords. We demand a repeal of the corruption Raytheon deal. Not only that, but we demand a public hearing on reversing the deal and giving the incentivized funds directly to communities hit hard by COVID. These Commissioners pulled $27 million out of thin air for 800 jobs three years from now, when they couldn't even effectively save 133 people who have died from COVID in the last eight months. When the tourism industry that you have pandered to for decades starts to fall apart in a pandemic, the county turns around and says, "We have to make a deal with the second-largest war profiteer in the world." Like, enough is enough, and this decision needs to be repealed, and there needs to be a public hearing on it. And that's about all I got for you guys. Thank you for your time.
Caller, you're live.
Yes. My name is Susan Oller, and I live in Asheville. In the past few years, we have heard of many incidences of corruption within the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners and with some employees of Buncombe. And just in the last couple of months, we have found out about secret negotiations between county Commissioners, built more farms, and Raytheon that have taken place over the last 15 months. This has gone on behind closed doors and out of public awareness. This closed process involves $27 million in tax subsidies and incentives from Buncombe County taxpayers. This was all passed without even one public meeting or hearing. Public comments were allowed at one Commissioners' meeting, and all questions and concerns raised were totally ignored. Commissioners had already predetermined their votes. In my eyes, this reeks of corruption. It is my opinion that every U.S. citizen is responsible for their actions of their federal, state, and local government. One way they exercise this oversight is by voting. How can we vote intelligently when major actions and decisions are hidden until after the election? I feel it is very dishonest for politicians to present a public persona while running for election, while at the same time keeping voters in the dark as to your real plans and purposes. I know I would have voted very differently if I was aware of what was going on behind the scenes. Since I believe that U.S. citizens are responsible for their government's actions, it follows that citizens have a responsibility to speak out when they see actions and decisions that are immoral, or evil, or destructive. They have a responsibility to speak up in public and private ways to make their assessments known. This includes lobbying, protesting, marching, holding rallies, holding public education events, and writing letters to elected officials and to the press. Saying you oppose our federal government's actions while doing nothing is complicity, and going to one anti-war rally as a participant does not discharge your responsibilities. Saying that you oppose certain government actions while doing nothing just means you are a hypocrite. Engaging in actions or decisions that are actually supportive of outcomes you say you oppose just means that you are an extreme hypocrite. It is totally dishonest. The people of Yemen, Gaza, Syria, Libya, and other places know full well who makes bombs that drop on their homes, and they know full well who makes the jets and drones to deliver those bombs. That means the U.S. citizens are the ones responsible. To the Commissioners who have worked in the past on civil rights, like voting rights or marriage rights--
You have 30 seconds.
--let me stress to you that human rights are far more important than civil rights. Getting married or going to vote does not mean much if you have bombs dropped on your hometown. For Commissioners who have worked in the past on environmental issues, I can assure you that your decision to support this jet-engine plant will have serious environmental and climate consequences. Just because most, if not, but not all, of the damage is done on the other side of the world does not mean it will not impact us down the road. The damage you have done with this decision to support Raytheon building a plant in our county will far outlive you. I am requesting that you reverse your decisions to give tax dollars or incentives to Raytheon.
Caller, you're live.
Hi, County Commissioners. My name is Victoria, and I'm a resident of Buncombe County. I'm calling in today to speak on a few issues, mainly the Pratt &amp; Whitney building that you guys are planning to build. As I'm sure you already know, it was pretty shameful that you kept it a secret from the community for so long, and finally, when the community finds out in October, after about 30 people telling you that it is absolutely not what we want to come into our community, you ignored us. Many of you quoting how you agree that we have environmental issues, and how, yeah, you wish that we could bring green technology here, but that's just not what's available, as if there's not a choice as to whether to bring this company into our neighborhoods. A few of you, one of you even said that Jesus told you to bring this company into our community. I'm sorry, but there is nothing that is acceptable about this company. They create war, and, I mean, they are a subsidiary of Raytheon, which is known in the military-industrial complex. I mean, you are inviting war mongers into our community, and I don't care what you use to justify it to yourself, it's just not okay, and the community is not going to give up. You failed us on giving us an opportunity to tell you what we wanted and to make a choice about having this here. Well, now we are creating our own opportunity, and we are going to keep telling you that this is absolutely not what we want, because it is not too late. You can reject this deal, you can back out, you can choose to do something better. I mean, you keep talking about reparations, and you keep talking about the ecological, the environmental issue that we're having in the world, and yet you're going behind what you're saying, and you are choosing to bring something into our community that is only going to make those things worse. I mean, this company is going to be responsible for even more devastation to BIPOC communities around the world, including our own, and it's going to be responsible for ecological devastation. The military-industrial complex is one of the largest polluters--
30 seconds.
--in the entire world. It is not too late to stop this, and to tell our Senators that Buncombe County opposes the arms deal with the UAE. We do not need to be sending arms coming out of Asheville, North Carolina. We do not want that blood on our hands. Please stand by and with us, and help us to keep that from happening. Thank you, have a nice night.
My name is Cindy Hile, and I live in the Anka area, and I want to thank you for letting me speak, and I just wanted to talk about transparency. In a November 3rd, 2020, Mountain Express article, it was titled "Western North Carolina General Election 2020: Live Coverage," Commissioner, well, Chairperson, Ms. Newman, said, was quoted, that officials would commit to open and transparent methods of business to ensure that the voices of Republicans are heard, and I think that was in reference to, I inferred from the writer, that Mr. Newman was referring to the commission's new makeup of six Democrats and only one Republican as a result of that day's election. Getting to the Pratt &amp; Whitney deal, it seems it was transacted with little to no transparency. It was before this newly-formed commission that is seated tonight, post-election, but I'm wondering if, like, why was Project Ranger, we didn't start reading about it until the summer, and why were we not told about exactly what it was? And maybe we were beforehand and I didn't catch it, but it was like the end of October, early November. And I'd like to know why residents who are not necessarily Republicans, who are supposed to be included now, were not afforded an opportunity to comment on this Pratt &amp; Whitney deal until the November 17th Commissioners' meeting, when in spite of the concerns raised, every Commissioner then seated voted in favor of the plant. When I look back on the behavior of several Buncombe County leaders over the past five years, and I don't think I have to go into details about that, and then this most recent event, I wonder what the term transparency means to Buncombe County officials who are elected and/or hired to watch over the interests of all county residents. I'm wondering if-- I'm wondering if this is transparency with coming down the pike with done deals that perhaps haven't, the public hasn't been made aware of yet. And people may like the 800 jobs promised in the Pratt &amp; Whitney deal, and I get that. I grew up in the Rust Belt, and maybe don't care that it was transacted so discreetly, but this precedent has been set, and I'm wondering if there'll be future deals made without taxpayers' knowledge and input during the negotiations. Maybe those won't be so pleasing to everyone. Thank you.
Caller, you are live.
Thank you. My name is Anne Craig, and I live in Asheville. I have fierce concerns about the process followed in the approval of Pratt &amp; Whitney's plant construction, construction here and about the company itself. I was surprised and disturbed to learn that the company was Pratt &amp; Whitney, the subsidiary of Raytheon, a major military contractor and arms seller. When I emailed all of you, my conservatives, about this deal, not one of you replied to me. The only time commissioners held a public comment period about the project was right before you voted unanimously to approve $27 million in tax subsidies to this company. A Google search shows that Raytheon Technologies' revenue for the 12 months ending in September 2020 was over $82 billion. Yet county taxpayers are going to subsidize their move here to the tune of $27 million in property tax breaks? This is corporate upfear at its best. Raytheon wouldn't come here unless they knew that tax breaks would be approved. Biltmore Farms had put millions into the project and begun grading the site before the public had a chance to weigh in. So it appears that Raytheon and Biltmore Farms must have been assured that commissioners would approve the tax breaks no matter what the public's comments or concerns were. Raytheon's products are components of military hardware sold to Saudi Arabia, among other nations, which has used them in a brutal military campaign on Yemen, resulting in one of the world's worst humanitarian crises. It is very distressing that Biltmore Farms and our county commission have gotten into bed with a notorious war profiteer, because they say Raytheon will provide our area with needed jobs. A study by Brown University concludes that the clean energy, healthcare, and education sectors create more jobs than the military. Why doesn't our commissioner, Biltmore Farms, force to bring those kinds of industries here? In a time when we must address the two existential crises of our time, climate change and war, we should be divesting for the world's worst polluter, the military industrial complex of which Raytheon is a part, and investing in industries that support human needs and a cleaner, sustainable environment. An article in Business North Carolina on October 22, 2020, said this, quote, "The project is expected to encounter environmental opposition, given the proximity to the river and the region's beauty, along with Asheville's reputation for political activism." That opposition almost didn't happen because of your lack of transparency. But the opposition is here to fight your best efforts to keep this deal under the proverbial radar. I call on you to declare a moratorium on this project. Your home community meeting for citizens' questions and concerns can be heard in address. From environmental, humanitarian, and democratic perspectives, this is a bad deal. Thank you.
Caller, you are live.
Okay, I'm here. That's good. I hope I am, because I can't see nothing, because the Dad Jim picture stopped, and you know your sound is awful bad. It doesn't have anything to do with the folks operating it. You need to spend some money to get your equipment operation right first before you spend money on anything, okay? Or if you want to do it in the blind, that's fine. But I'm going to talk about something. I'm going to talk about a subject that is very, very hard for some of you to grasp, and that's called slavery. And, and I'll help you any way I can, because you're going to need all the help you can get. Because let's just look about something. AB Tech, AB Tech is already getting tax dollars and should be providing things to help this business come to town, and other businesses. Where are they at? Mike Pryor tried to work on that. Alternative energy, you had one of you callers talk about a whim. Alternative energy is a whim. It'll pass. We done found out windmills don't work here, so you need to get into the details and look at the fact that you'd need to clean off the solar panels, because if you don't, they're inefficient. Small business, hey, you know who hurts small business? Cooper Cooper by shutting it down. That's why I hurt small business. And then I saw in one of your plans in the pre-meeting, people ought to watch that, too, no gas. You know, this boy, I tell you what, that retired junior really suffers if you have no gas, because what's going to happen to her heating bill? Now, let's look at Asheville. Make Asheville what they want to be. I tell you what, let's do it. Let's tear down the Vance Monument. Let's tear down the Cheryl Inn, because you all realize that is tied into Jameson Flure Clark and the Jaegers, and you're using their tax dollars to create a conservation easement all around it. At the same time, you want to use our tax dollars to tear down the Vance Monument? Get your head right. Steve Rasmussen put the best article in the paper, and by the way, he is a wicket, so you need to read what he said, all of you that want diversity. He is the best article I've ever seen on the Vance Monument. Thank you, Steve. So make Asheville what it is. Burn Cheryl Inn down and get Zeb Vance up here in, in Rems Creek. And then we'll have Asheville what you want to be. We'll all be lovey-dory, hunky-dory, and we won't have any war in the whole world. And remember, Abel, I'll try my best to help you any way I can, but I'm going to tell you what.
30 seconds.
You're looking, you're looking at a situation where if you don't satisfy those six, they'll show you what slavery is. That's my comment, and thank you for taking it. It's a heck of a way to do it, but I'll do it. Bye.
Caller, you are live.
Yes. My name is Peggy Bennett. I oppose the removal of the Vance Monument. Just because a group of radicals who know nothing about the monument tell the commissioners and the council members to take it down, both groups are jumping to do their bidding. What our leaders need to do is give the people that they represent a say in the matter. Let this magnificent structure stand. Just rename it, but not in memory of an individual. The political parties would never agree on the same person. Have a community contest to give it a special name of its own, something our country, our county, and state would be proud of. Why are you in such a hurry? You're the bosses. You don't have to be in a hurry. Once the monument is down, it's your fault. I'll say that one more time. Once the monument is down, it's your fault. No one else's. Listen to the people you represent before making this serious, serious decision. Be strong. Please, let it stay.
Caller, you are live.
Hi, my name is John Finn. I'm living in Orton, and my topic is the Vance Monument. I think we can all agree that public space is very important, and Asheville is blessed to have some very special attractive features in its public space, of which the Vance Monument is a central piece. Diablo's form is universal. It is uplifting. It points to the heavens. It's aspirational. It puts Asheville in the lofty circle of cities that include the Vatican, London, and Washington, D.C. Just like Washington, D.C. and the Vatican, its form works with the circular form of City Hall and the public space of Plaque Square to create a very, very unique and attractive environment for the public. Further, it reflects the mountains with its unique stonework. So I ask, why would we consider removing this treasure? I think calling it a Confederate monument is simply wrong. There's no soldier, there's no cannon, there's no horse, no battles were fought there. Really, the only possible issue is the name, and I think 99% of people don't recognize the name Vance. But even if it is an issue to anybody, it's easily handled by removing or renaming the monument, and many people have suggested this. Hell, call it the Whiteside Monument if that's what it takes to keep it. To date, there has been no reasonable argument why this simple solution of removing the name does not work. And if you can't come up with a reason not to just take the name off, why, why do anything else? In contrast, I think there are at least three negatives that will stain those elected officials who vote to remove. First, I think you're joining those that did the rioting and vandalism in the summer by simply doing more vandalism to the central monument in the city. Second, there's a smell of racism in all this. Your task force, you know, even went to the measure of wanting to collect ethnic data on those that were putting in suggestions, so to exclude, exclude those that weren't African-American. Imagine that, discriminating by race. And there's also the hint of anti-Semitism, as this monument's been special to the Jewish community. Third, there's the issue of cowardice. It's noted that you used a task force to put this issue behind the election date.
30 seconds.
Mm-hmm. This should have been an issue that the voters should have had a chance to consider in cashing their vote, or better yet, should have been a proposition. So I think that, you know, there's an easy, simple solution, and that's just to remove the name, and I ask the council to consider this solution. Thank you very much.
You're live, Melanie.
Hi, my name is Melanie Noes, resident of West Asheville and daughter of a refugee. I hope the new commissioners are able to do their job and listen to the public, because last meeting, each commissioner heard the public speak for over an hour and still voted yes on the Pratt &amp; Whitney Economic Development Plan, better known as the Buncombe County Giveaway to Raytheon. Pushing this through without public consent is unacceptable. This is what the commissioners had to say on November 17, despite the outcry. Jasmine Beach Ferrara said that God told her this deal was fine. Sounds like giving money to a war profiteer that bombs children is part of her gospel of peace. Amanda Edwards thinks that Pratt &amp; Whitney will increase wages in the Asheville area. Apparently, you can put a price tag on environmental devastation. Robert Presley didn't know there was any opposition to the deal. How could he, when the corrupt decision was made behind closed doors and in secret? Brownie Newman says that he's an environmentalist, yet spouts the same talking points as coal barons, telling us to focus on the jobs and ignores the looming environmental dangers written all over this plan. And Al Whitesides, in light of adoption awareness last meeting, mentioned supporting childhood development. I guess that doesn't include the orphans that Raytheon makes out of families in war-torn countries, or the children separated from their parents by ICE using Raytheon technologies. Our mountains are worthy of so much better than a Raytheon facility. People driving down the parkway would look out at the French Broad River and forever be reminded of how Buncombe County talks about reparations but sells out to warlords. We demand the repeal of the corrupt Raytheon deal. Not only that, but we demand a public hearing on reversing the deal and giving the incentivized funds directly to communities hit hard by COVID. These commissioners pulled $27 million out of thin air for 800 jobs three years from now, when they couldn't even effectively save the 130 people who have died from COVID in the last eight months. When the tourism industry that they've pandered to for decades starts to fall apart in a pandemic, the country turns around and says, "We have to make a deal with the second largest war profiteer in the world." Buncombe County Commissioners, enough is enough. Repeal this decision and hold a public hearing. Also, here's an example of what a bomb carried by a military plane made with parts from Asheville would sound like.
Caller, you are live.
Hi, my name is JT Noddy Samperz, and I am resident of Asheville. At the last meeting, five out of seven of you voted yes on the Pratt &amp; Whitney Economic Development Plan, more accurately known as a giveaway to Raytheon. I left Tucson, Arizona, to move to this city partly to get away from this, the city that is just fine with profiting off of war. Not only does Raytheon make technology that kills people, the folks I know who worked for them talked about slowly losing their souls. They openly called it working for the devil. We can't let this company take our livelihood and lives of people elsewhere. Jasmine Beach Ferrara, you said, "God told you this deal was fine." Is giving money to a war profiteer that bombs children part of your gospel of peace? Amanda Edwards, do you really think that Pratt &amp; Whitney will increase wages in the Asheville area? Even if it did, you can't put a price tag on environmental devastation? Robert Presley, you didn't know there was any opposition to this deal. Who do you even represent then? Brownie Newman, you say you're an environmentalist, yet you spout the same talking points as coal barons, telling us to focus on the jobs that will kill our souls and ignore the looming environmental dangers written all over this plan. And Al Whitesides, in light of adoption awareness last meeting, you mentioned supporting childhood development. I guess that doesn't include orphans that Raytheon makes in war-torn countries, or the children separated from their parents when Raytheon makes contracts with ICE, just like in Tucson, where I left to come here. Our mountains are worthy of so much better than the Raytheon facility. People driving down the parkway would look out at the French Broad River, overlook and forever be reminded of how Buncombe County talks about reparations but sells out to warlords. We demand that the repeal, the repeal of the corrupt Raytheon deal. Not only that, but we demand a public hearing on reversing the deal and giving the incentivized funds directly to the communities hit hard by COVID. These commissioners pulled 27 million out of thin air for 800 jobs three years from now, when they couldn't even effectively save the 133 people who have died from COVID in the last eight months, or spend any money on the folks struggling to pay rent. We have the highest risk of people going homeless, getting evicted. More than, almost 50% of the entire country is getting...
30 seconds left.
...kicked out of their houses soon. When the tourist industry said that they, when the tourism industry that they've pandered to for decades started to fall apart in the pandemic, you guys turned around and said that we had to make a deal with the second largest war profiteer in the world, and it destroys people's souls. It really does. All of my friends that worked for Raytheon said that they hated it. They called it the devil. It should not be here. I'm asking you to repeal the decision and hold a public hearing. There are surely better ways to create jobs than paying Raytheon to come here. Thank you.
Caller, you are live.
My name is Matilda, and I live in Asheville. At the last meeting, five out of seven of you voted yes on tax breaks for Raytheon. How dare you? Each and every one of you had the audacity to sit and listen to thirty public comments after a rushed timeline, or tapping in tonight, and yet still come up with the worst short-sighted reasons to push this through without public consent. Jasmine Beach Ferrara said, "God told her this deal was fine." Sounds like giving money to a war profiteer that bombs children is part of her religious practice. Amanda Edwards thinks that Raytheon will increase wages in the Asheville area. What will be left after the decision such as this to equip one of the worst polluters in the world and push the human race to the point of extinction? Robert Presley didn't know there was an opposition to this deal. How could he, when the corrupt decision was made behind closed doors in a secret meeting? Brownie Newman says he's an environmentalist, yet spouts the same talking points as coal barons, telling us to focus on jobs and ignore the looming environmental dangers written all over this. And Al Whitesides, in light of adoption awareness last meeting, mentioned supporting childhood development. I guess that doesn't include the parent slaughter using Raytheon bombs dropped by planes into war-torn countries, or the children separated from their parents when Raytheon makes contracts with ICE, thus criminalizing their danger-ridden journeys through poverty and violence. We are worth so much better than a handout to Raytheon. It shows a thing of wonder to live in a county that talks about reparations but then sells out to warlords. We demand the repeal of the corrupt Raytheon deal. Not only that, but we demand a public hearing on reversing the deal and giving the incentivized funds directly to communities hit hard by COVID. These commissioners pulled $27 million out of thin air for 800 jobs three years from now, when they couldn't even effectively save the 133 people who have died from COVID in the last eight months. When the tourism industry that they've pandered to for decades starts to fall apart in a pandemic, the county turns around and says, "We have to make a deal with the second largest war profiteer in the world." Horrendous. County Commissioners, enough is enough. If you don't change this, you're a bunch of murderers.
Hi, my name is Elsa, and I am a resident of Arden, North Carolina. I am calling to speak on the deal with Pratt &amp; Whitney and Raytheon. It's really unfortunate that we are in this position, and I wish we were not. I don't know why you think that we need a war profiteering environmental destroyer in our, in our community. The reality is, we won't get any jobs for at least three years, and it's not going to help us the way that you think it's going to. You claim that there are going to be jobs for the people of our community, but how many people in this community will actually get those jobs? How many people will get moved here to work for Raytheon and take those jobs away from the community that actually needs them? Also, jobs don't outweigh environmental impact. This is located right along the French Broad, which is already a river that is very polluted and is struggling. There are many species in that river that are teetering on the edge, and it's a river that we all use, that we use for recreation. People like to fish and swim in that river. Do we really want to put our families at risk for the sake of money? We talked about reparations, about how we wanted to make the community feel safer and better, and you said we couldn't afford it right now, and you go ahead and give all of this money away to a corporation that literally kills people of color. That makes zero sense and is just unbelievable. And where was this money that you pulled out of thin air? With COVID response, when the federal government dropped the ball on us and people were struggling for food and for housing, where was this money to help those people? I'm hoping that maybe everybody calling tonight will convince you to repeal your decision.
You have thirty seconds left.
Or at least have a public hearing to discuss repealing the decision. Please listen to the public on this. You're helping make the world more dangerous. Somebody earlier said we live in a dangerous world. You are making the world more dangerous. Thank you.
Caller, you're live.
Yes, I would like to thank the board for opening up the meeting to comments. Three minutes is not a lot of time to make as many points as I would like to, so I'll get right to the issues. I recently found out about the plans for the expansion in the Asheville.com news article dated 10/23 of this, this year. I'll quote Brownie Newman's comment, if I can find it here. The Buncombe County Board of Commissioners is proud to welcome Pratt &amp; Whitney to this community as they announce the single-largest job creation project in history, in our history. It will help diversify our local economy and create hundreds of new jobs. I'm paraphrasing a bit, I'm sure you've all seen the article, but basically, they're promising about 800 jobs up through 2027 and about $68,000 a year wage. But some of the things that that's not addressing are the recent financial things going on with Raytheon. Sorry, I'm trying to get my notes together here. They most, Raytheon, the parent company, most recently, it was revealed on October 27th that their financials were off by a bit, going back as far as 2009. Let's see here, there's some more articles about Pratt &amp; Whitney announcing 15, up to 15,000 layoffs up in Massachusetts. So basically, what I'm getting at is there's no guarantee that these jobs are going to be permanent. I also would like to bring to the commission's attention a lawsuit that's currently going on in Florida surrounding terminal brain cancer issue with a 20-year-old female, all due to Pratt &amp; Whitney contamination of the local water supply and the dirt samples over that whole period from 2009 up until recent.
You have thirty seconds.
In conclusion, I know, again, this is not a lot of time, three minutes, but in conclusion, I would like to say, Raytheon and Pratt &amp; Whitney does not belong in Buncombe County or any part of Western North Carolina. They're a weapons manufacturer, and by very nature, they put citizens of this community at risk. I implore the commissioners to focus on making decisions based on what is morally, ethically, socially, ecologically, and financially the best decision for our peaceful mountain community. Enough with grandstanding corporations profit over people's lives.
Hi, my name is Pearl. I'm going to start off by clarifying that our county has plenty of other issues, such as the over 100-plus new confirmed cases of COVID over each of the last couple of days you could be attending to, instead of gleefully handing over tens of millions of dollars in tax credits to war profiteers. To be blunt, I want you to appeal this rash decision, and I want a public hearing on said reversal. The only quote-unquote pros to inviting Raytheon into our backyards that I've heard so far are the supposed jobs and the supposed pay rate of these jobs. But as of June 4th, 2020, via a New York Times article, it states, "Raytheon Technologies, one of the country's biggest defense contractors, recently cut salaries for tens of thousands of employees as the pandemic cramped business." Around the same time, it also quietly made a change to the pay package of its chief executive, Gregory Hayes, and would, that would increase his future income by millions of dollars. The article goes on to clarify, "The change led to an estimated $12.5 million gain for Mr. Hayes on his recent equity awards," Raytheon later told the New York Times. The company said that the change was necessary to ensure that Mr. Hayes did not lose compensation that he had already been awarded. Clearly, they put the needs of the 1% over the other 99% of their workers. Where exactly do you think that the workers in Asheville would sit in? Certainly not them. Don't be naive. To clarify also, as of the last week in October of this year, Raytheon had laid off 20,000 employees. So what I'm saying is, I don't think we should put all of our eggs into the Raytheon basket and expect a good outcome. Third, we need to speak frankly about what is, what it is exactly our county would be complicit in by getting into bed with Raytheon. How exactly does Raytheon make their profits? While yes, we need good jobs here, can we consider Raytheon a good company with good jobs? I'd say no. Numerous environmental and human rights organizations agree with me. I'm going to read portions from an Amnesty International article that discusses Raytheon. The article is headlined Yemen: U.S.-Made Bomb Used in Deadly Airstrike on Civilians. It was published in September of 2019. I suggest looking it up, reading it in full, and viewing the images attached. I also suggest simply Googling Raytheon war crimes or something similar. Raytheon's extensive involvement in the war business are well-known and well-documented. A precision-guided ammunition made in the U.S. was used in a Saudi and Emirati-led airstrike this year on a residential home in Yemen, killing six civilians, including three children, Amnesty International said today. The laser-guided bomb manufactured by U.S. company Raytheon and used in this attack is the latest evidence that the USA is supplying weapons that are being used by the Saudi and Emirati-led coalition in attacks. It is unfathomable and unconscionable that the U.S. continues
You have thirty seconds left. Caller, you're live.
My name is Shira McKinley, I'm from Asheville. I'm speaking on the Vance Monument. The Vance Monument is currently attributed to a white supremacist whose main claim to fame was his treason against the United States of America. I will not go into his many disgusting traits now. If you're here, you're already aware of who Vance was and who he represented. However, I disagree with the recommendation by the task force to tear down the monument. As much as it pains me to say that I agree with a number of races who say we shouldn't erase our history, we should not erase our history. We should, however, bring a fuller truth to it. As a Jew who has walked through the Auschwitz camp in Poland, I think it's necessary to remember the sins of our past so that such things never happen again. In my youth, I heard two sayings often from the older generation who lived through the Holocaust. First, never again, and second, forgive but never forget. We can only move forward by remembering, acknowledging, and then righting the wrongs of the past. To move past the dark history, the shame of that history must be brought to light in the present. Generations of African-Americans have suffered and continue to suffer from the policies that started in Vance's time, continuing through Reconstruction, segregation, redlining, and the perpetuation of opportunity gaps for the African-American community. We must remember our past so that we can learn from it. But obviously, we should not honor a man who is specifically famous for his support of treason against this country and his white supremacy. I would suggest adding a plaque to the monument that specifically describes the history of the monument itself, stating that the city of Asheville denounces the actions of Devlin Vance and what this city is doing to try to remedy systemic racism now. My suggestion is to rename the obelisk, something to reflect this change, such as the Unity Monument, or something more creative or suitable, decided by those who have been impacted most. If you decide to go forward with the monument removal, you will likely receive tremendous criticism based on both the erasure of history and the expense of tearing down the obelisk. I've addressed my beliefs on the question of history. By renaming rather than tearing down the pillar, you will remove the economic concern of those opponents as well. Truthfully, I would rather have any further opposition to the change to the monument be based solely on reasons of white supremacy. Let's remove the obstacles that allow a quote-unquote irrational reason to preserve the monument in its current form. Let's allow people to argue preservation of Vance's memory based on what it really is, underlying racism.
You have thirty seconds left.
Asheville has approved reparations for African-Americans. I would further suggest that the money saved by not tearing down the obelisk be used in furtherance of those reparations. Thank you.
Caller, you're live.
Good evening. My name is Michael McGuire, and I'm the Vice President of Operations for the Equipment Division of Thermo Fisher Scientific, and I'm also a proud resident of Buncombe County. Calling in respect to Project Ranger. And personally, I lead non-global manufacturing sites that are both domestic and international sites, that employ thousands of people around the globe, and one of the most common things I see across all of our locations, in our communities, in our businesses, is the one thing that impacts people. Forget the companies, but the people, our economic growth. And that's the things that unite communities, it lifts people up, it grows their community, and it helps everyone. I've seen this firsthand on multiple occasions, the overwhelming positive effects of creating jobs. I've listened to callers back and forth tonight talk about the company, but we've got to think locally about, about the people and the jobs that we're creating. It's hard to talk about the, about caring for marginalized people, or people in poverty, or homelessness, or education, or folks not given equality of opportunity, when the biggest thing that they can do is give them strong-paying jobs in our community. A good-paying job can change the course of a family and its trajectory for generations. Bringing 800 jobs to this community and not only looking at the, we're only looking at the negative on these calls. Everyone's thinking about the short-sightedness of these conversations. We should be proud that Pratt &amp; Whitney is investing $650 million in our local community in facilities, equipment, technology, tax base. All of these things will grow our community. Can you imagine what nearly $60 million of income wages, at $68,000 per employee by average, you imagine $60 million annually, it's going to go to support local mechanics, local schools, restaurants, merchants, every walk of life. This is going to lift everyone. I represent the manufacturing community, I represent the board of, as the Board of Chairman for the EDC, which is their 20-person board, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, 30-person board, and hundreds of people that support our mission in the Chamber of Commerce. I stand behind our commissioners' decision to support Pratt &amp; Whitney. The silent majority of this community supports you, commissioners, and we support, we have your back in spite of this unjustified opposition that we're listening to. We need you to be strong during this time and do what's right for Buncombe County. Continue to support Pratt &amp; Whitney as you have before. Thank you.
Allow, I must begin by breaking protocol and asking a question. Earlier this afternoon, you received a respectful request from the President of Veterans for Peace that you take a vote at the beginning of the meeting on whether to add a vote on this, on a resolution that we had submitted that cannot wait until next meeting, and even if you disagree, to at least give us the honor of having a vote on whether to put this on your agenda. Can someone please respond whether any of you would be willing to put that, it's all in your inboxes, can somebody put that on the agenda, please? We're not going to respond to any comments, we're just listening right now. Please don't cut me off, I hope you have a vote at the end of the comment period on this resolution. This is a resolution regarding the congressional action to block arms sales that could include parts manufactured in Buncombe County. Whereas, on August 4th, 2020, the Buncombe County Commissioners passed a resolution to support community reparations for black people, which included a call for congressional action. Whereas, on November 17th, the Commissioners approved an economic development agreement with Pratt &amp; Whitney, a division of Raytheon, which plans to manufacture parts for F-35 warplanes and potentially other military hardware. Whereas, in public hearing on November 17th, citizens and some commissioners expressed their wishes that the county and its citizens avoid culpability for avoidable deaths and environmental damage from the use of weapons with parts manufactured in the county. Whereas, on November 10th, the Trump Administration formally notified Congress of its intent to sell $23 billion of high-tech weaponry to the United Arab Emirates, including 50 F-35 warplanes and 54 Pratt &amp; Whitney F-135 engines. Whereas, last year lawmakers put hold on arms deal to UAE and Saudi Arabia citing civilian death in the U.S.-assisted Saudi and UAE bombing in Yemen, the Saudi assassination of journalist Jamal Khashoggi, and fears such sales could cause an arms race.
You have thirty seconds left.
Whereas, Human Rights Day is December 10th, 2020, and also the last day for Congress to block the sale of Pratt &amp; Whitney engines to UAE through Senate Joint Resolution 78. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the County Commission of Buncombe County that is opposed to the above-mentioned arms sales, even though they might give fiscal benefit to the county, and urges Senator Tom Tillis and U.S. Senator Burr to vote for Senate Joint Resolution 78 to block the sale. You have it in your inboxes.
Your time has expired.
Shorts.
Yes, thank you. May I begin?
Yes, please.
May it please the Commissioners' court. My name is Kirk D. Lyons, I am from Black Mountain, North Carolina. Removing the Vance Monument by fiat of the county or city is an act of tyranny. The Vance Monument is the people's art, the art of all the people of Asheville and Buncombe County, and not the bauble of transitory elected bodies. To remove or alter the people's art without their express permission violates your oath of office and the North Carolina Monument Protection Act. And my understanding is that the legal question, question of ownership of the monument is still an open question that has not been resolved. And remember, in 2015, when the Vance Monument was restored and rededicated, the Mountain Express newspaper opined in an opinion piece that the Vance Monument was a monument to tolerance. Vance was a Vance was a friend to the Jewish community in North Carolina when Jews in America did not enjoy the tolerance that many take for granted today. So tell me, what happened to change this in the last five years? Please leave the monument alone and let the people decide the monument's fate, if that is necessary, by an advisory referendum. And if your aim is to erase "monuments to white supremacy" in Asheville, you would do better to bulldoze every pre-1964 building in downtown Asheville, including City Hall and the Buncombe County Courthouse. Antifa and Black Lives Matter may want Asheville to look like the future urban landscape of a Terminator movie, but the rest of us do not. And it is silly to judge historical figures by so-called enlightened modern standards. The Vance monument is a beautiful and iconic piece of public art, and it should so remain. Thank you very much for your time.
That concludes tonight's public comment.
All right, does that conclude the people have signed up for public comment? All right. Thank you very much. All right. The next item is we need to have a closed session to consult with an attorney. Ms. Hockaday, could you articulate the purpose of this?
Yes, sir. We need a motion and a second. Sorry, Max. We need a motion and a second to enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6 for the public body to consult with a retained attorney on legal matters. There are two matters that will be addressed. The first citation is County of Buncombe versus Wanda Skellington-Green et al., 18CVS 4206. The second is County of Buncombe versus Ellen Frost and Wanda Skellington-Green, 19CVS 5208. There are several other closed-session matters. Are we reserving those until after the meeting?
Is that what the staff are requesting? So we'll have a second closed session after the conclusion of the rest of the agenda. We're going to use this closed session to just consult with Ron Payne about the matters that Ms. Hockaday just outlined. Sounds like that's the plan. Okay. Is there a motion to go into closed session for the purposes just stated?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're in closed session. We will return and resume with the remaining items on the agenda. Commissioners, is there a motion to go back into open session?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing on the Keith rezoning request, and Nathan Pennington will present this item.
Max, if you'll pull up the presentation, please. And you'll have to bear with me because I'm going to, this screen isn't working over here, so I'm just going to have to take a couple of extra seconds to look back and forth. Good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners, New Commissioners, Wells and Sloan, welcome. Members of the public, my name is Nathan Pennington, the Planning Director here at Buncombe County. This is our request. This is ZPH 2020-00030. It is the Keith zoning map amendment. So as I noted before, the case number is listed before you. We are on the correct slide. This just gives you a quick overview that the item was advertised correctly, notices were sent out to the adjacent property owners, and the site was posted with a sign. And tonight is the public hearing. The request is for three separate parcels owned by three separate property owners. Property owners listed there. The applicant is James Craig Keith, and this is James Craig Keith, Thomas Haverstock, and Andrew McDonald. I did want to point out that Mr. Keith is with us tonight. The property is located at 569, 571, and 585 Long Shoals Road, and the request is from Neighborhood Service and R2 Residential District to CS Commercial Service. Before you, on the screen, is a map that indicates the three parcels. As you can see, on the one to the left, that is how they're currently zoned, R2 and Neighborhood Service. The red indicates if it was approved, what that would look like as they go to Commercial Service. The map amendment request represents a collection of properties with three unique owners. Two of the subject parcels were already zoned, Neighborhood Service, that's the pink areas there on your map, and a change to Commercial Service does not represent a significant departure from their existing commercial status. The additional lot to the west that's zoned R2, it actually contains an existing car wash. The owner of this lot is seeking to bring compliance to the existing use on site. So if the property is rezoned tonight, that would bring that property into compliance rather than being non-conforming as residential as it currently is now. The properties have direct access to Long Shoals Road and are less than one-half mile from Brevard Road. Both Long Shoals Road and Brevard Road are North Carolina Department of Transportation, maintain roads, and are identified as transportation corridors. Public water via the city of Asheville is located along Long Shoals Road. The properties are currently served by septic systems. However, public sewer is located adjacent to two of the subject properties and currently serves the existing strip commercial center located at 565 Long Shoals Road. And on your map there, that's indicated by the two side-by-side buildings on the eastern most extent. That's not part of this application, but that's already zoned commercially, Neighborhood Service. On the next slide here, I just want to point out a couple of things. This is just a snapshot in time. You can see the car wash there to your top. You can see one of the homes that's already zoned Neighborhood Service, as well as the one with the property owner sign. That's Mr. Keith's property, and that's the one that's actually with the real estate sign RV being shown as being marketed as commercial. So it's 10.14 acres. I've gone over the uses and how it's served by existing utilities. This section of Long Shoals Road provides a linkage to the busy commercial corridors of both Brevard Road and Long Shoals Road. Let's take another look here. I'm going to go back to that one, just to give you an idea of the area in front of you so you can understand sort of the context there. There's that commercial strip center that I indicated on the right. There's an HVAC distribution facility to the north. The Riverstone Apartments, which just recently got built. Borg Warner, the villas at Avery Creek, in this snapshot were still under construction. And the medic ambulance facility is to the south of the site. So it's a real hodgepodge sort of mixed bag of uses in this area. This area is indicative of a transportation corridor that's been transitioning to more intensive density and commercial uses over the years. And this section of Long Shoals Road contains a number of warehouse, storage, manufacturing, multifamily strip centers, and lower residential uses. One of the primary differences between Neighborhood Service and Commercial Service is the provision for outdoor sales and storage and motor vehicle impoundment lots. While Neighborhood Service does not allow these uses, Commercial Service does. Further, the zoning ordinance provides for special requirements that must be met in order to establish an impound lot, such as including a designated and fenced storage area and A request to rezone two of the subject properties from R2 to NS was approved by the Board of Commissioners in August of 2019. And just to go back and show you those two that were previously approved, on the image on your left, that's what was approved in 2019. Those went from R2 to Neighborhood Service, the pink areas again. While specific development plans cannot be considered as part of a zoning map amendment, one of the properties is currently being marketed as a commercial property and is wedged in between an existing strip center and the Keith parcel. The parcel ending in 6752, which is not up there listed with that PIN number, contains that active car wash use. And future development on the Keith parcel for an impound lot will require that special requirements have to be met through the application of a zoning permit. The Planning Board approved this request unanimously at their November 16th meeting. Staff recommends approval of the request. And again, Mr. Keith is here with any questions? Also in front of you, when we get to the point, we're going to use a color-coded consistency statement tonight. And I'll walk through it with you, but essentially, if you find it consistent, we're going to follow the green path. If it's found to be inconsistent, we will follow the red path. And again, we're going to do this in two votes, consistency statement, and then we're going to vote on the rezoning application itself. I'll stand back for any questions, and you may have some questions for Mr. Keith. He might want to say a few words.
Are there any initial questions, Commissioners? All right. Mr. Keith, would you like to make any statements?
No, sir. I'm just, the reason that...
Come on up, Mr. Keith. Yeah, just coming up.
And I don't know if we mentioned it, but do we want to open the public hearing now?
Should his statements be made during the public hearing, Mr. Frew? Mr. Keith, I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:55, and Mr. Keith, we'd be happy to hear any comments you want to share.
Okay. The reason we've asked for a rezoning since so shortly after we were zoned Neighborhood Services, the real estate agent told us that once it got zoned Neighborhood Services, that we would be able to put a towing service in there. And we received a contract from the Department of Transportation to keep I-26 open during the construction. When I went to apply for a permit for a building, put our trucks in, I was informed that we were not zoned for that. And that's when I met with Mr. Pennington, and that's why we're here today.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak or who are signed up to speak?
There is no other.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing at 6:57 and come back to the Commission. Are there any questions, or is there a motion?
I think I might. We're doing 6:51.
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. We need to cite at least some of the reasons listed on the A through G list.
So that's correct. And then you can choose the reasons below A through G if you find it to be consistent. I would at least make two or three.
And from the staff standpoint, are there any of these that it would not be consistent with, or that you've had a finding it's not consistent with, or are they all?
I can help you with that. And actually, in the body of the staff report, staff has found that there's reasonable proximity to major transportation corridors, reasonable proximity to infrastructure, and find it to be in compliance with the remaining items that are listed. We focused mostly on items A and B.
Robert, do you want to incorporate A and B in your motion? Okay. So there's a motion that it is consistent, including items A and B regarding proximity to transportation corridors and proximity to infrastructure. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Great. We've got a motion and second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And now, is there a motion to approve the map amendment?
I still want...
Please second.
All right. There's a motion and second to approve the map amendment, a map amendment. And that includes the belief that the requested rezoning is reasonable and in the public All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Pennington. All right. Ms. Pender, do you have any items to share with us under Manager's Report?
Yes. Just real briefly, earlier this week, I sent an email to the Board letting them know that we were successful in getting the CDBG funds that would be used to help our residents with evictions. I do want to make the announcement that we're still using KIR's money right now for evictions. So if any resident has a need, please make sure to reach out to Health and Human Services. That fund is ongoing. The new money will start in January, so there will be no gap in service at this time. So I wanted to answer your question as well, sir. But we currently have those funds available if residents want to help out. And the other thing is, don't forget that we need to have a decision on the December 22nd board meeting before you leave today.
Thank you very much. Okay. Just on that point, we didn't, we didn't actually add that to the agenda. Is it okay for us to cancel the 20-second meeting if this is by consensus? There is no old business. We are under a new business. Why don't we just go ahead and just take that up since it's fresh on our minds? We don't have, the staff don't have any items that we believe need to be addressed at the December 22nd meeting right before Christmas. Would someone like to make a motion to cancel that meeting?
Make a motion to cancel that meeting?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are going to have a budget retreat later this week, so we will have another meeting this year. All right. Next item under new business is selection of the vice chair, and this is a position that we've been rotating annually for as long as I know. So...
Can I speak just a second?
Yes, sir.
I got to be vice chair the last year, and I mean, it's a job that takes a lot of time, a lot of work, seven days a week. I was vice chair of Brownie with your attendance. I was very fortunate to never get to hold a meeting. So with the vice chair coming up, I would like to nominate Al Whiteside, okay? Because, Al, you better put a lot of time aside, okay?
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Presley. If 2021 is like 2020, I might just, you never know. You never know. All right. There's a motion and second for Commissioner Whitesides. Any other nominations? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Commissioner Presley, for serving this year, and thank you, Commissioner Whitesides, for being willing to serve for the coming year. All right. Next item is a discussion about the Joint Vance Monument Task Force recommendations, and DK Wesley will get us started on this item.
Good evening, Commissioners, and while Max is setting that up, I'll just give an introduction for the co-chairs. We wanted to give them an option to join you all remotely, so...
That's okay.
And you can hear me, and you can see me.
Okay, guys. We can hear you.
I can hear you.
Can you see the board of commissioners?
No.
Okay.
You have to...
There you go.
All right. So DK Wesley, Assistant County Manager. For the benefit of the newly-elected Commissioners, I'd like to provide some background before the co-chairs get started. On June 16th, the Commission adopted a joint resolution with the city of Asheville to remove two Confederate monuments, the 60th Regiment of North Carolina Confederate Soldiers, and this monument was on the county property at the courthouse. Then also the Robert E. Lee Dixie Highway Colonel John Conley marker, and this was on city property. Also in that resolution, the Board and the Council voted to establish a jointly-appointed task force to develop a recommendation on the action regarding the removal or repurposing of Vance Monument. Both the 60th Regiment and Robert E. Lee monuments were removed this summer, with each entity handling the removal process for the monuments on its own property. entity handling the removal process for the monuments on its own property. The Vance Monument is located on city property, and they are ultimately the decision-makers on what happens with the monument. The county manager, if directed by the Commission, will continue to partner with the city manager on developing a plan for next steps. This evening, the co-chairs will present a recommendation and share detail around the extensive process the task force underwent to come to this recommendation. It has been my honor to work with these community members over the last 12 weeks, and having two strong co-chairs made our support much easier from a staff perspective. I want to thank Ms. Orlean Simmons and Ms. Deborah Miles for leading with integrity, fairness, and respect. Ms. Orlean Simmons is a descendant of people who were enslaved, is a native of Madison, Buncombe County. At Stevensley High School, she was a member of the Asheville Student Committee on Racial Equality. Ms. Simmons is a retired City of Asheville Parks and Recreation Cultural Arts Supervisor, and also president and founder of the Martin Luther King Association. Ms. Deborah Miles, a descendant of people who enslaved others, came from Arkansas in 1975 and is the founder of the UNC Asheville Center for Diversity Education. The center's work has included the Buncombe County Slave Deeds Project and research about the courageous teenagers of the Asheville Student Committee on Racial Equality. I will now pass it over to the co-chairs.
Thank you. It is an honor to present to the Buncombe County Commissioners, as well as Asheville City Council, the recommendations of the Vance Monument Task Force. And we have a slide presentation, and I hope that that is up and that I am following it. Next slide, please, which is the objectives. In June, following weeks of protests across our nation, an intergenerational group of citizens from Asheville brought a list of demands to our elected officials who resisted in the following, which resides in the following objectives being given to the task force. We are here tonight to share just a snapshot of our work and our recommendations. Next slide, please. The timeline. Beginning in August, we met every Thursday on the public cities platform. Our work was to be done in four months, in the middle of a pandemic. Next slide, please. Both Deborah Miles and I thank the task force members, who took on a heart-tremendous decision. We thank the staff of the county and the city who supported us, prioritized our safety, and helped us in the tricky spots. Next slide, please. Finally, we thank Cartina Caldwell, who was awesome in every respect, as she gave us both structure and flexibility to address a complex decision. These are all of the people to match our mountain. Next slide. Our timeline and milestones. It is not possible in these few minutes to share all of the research that the task force or staff did. Thanks to Cartina, there is a thorough report that is shared with the Commissioners and Council members for you to read. We do want to emphasize the community engagement work that we did. Next slide. Our community engagement. One charge was to prioritize the voices of the people and the community most impacted by the monument. Flyers and social media platforms were used to reach out to a list of community organizations to seek their thoughts, ideas, and concerns for removal, relocation, or repurposing the monument, which was our charge. Next slide. Community engagement again. By the beginning of November, we had heard from over 1,000 folks through emails, voice messages, and texts, some 50-plus folks in the two public call-in events, among the other occasions that are listed in the more detailed report. Next slide, which is also community engagement. We were especially moved by the youth and the young adults we heard from, as we remember Ella Baker's charge, "Young people come first. They have the courage where we fail." I'd like to read these quotes to you. "I am a senior at SLSA and the leader of keeping it real. My recommendation for the Vance Monument is for its removal, and that the money for its removal should be from grants and other financial resources rather than taxpayer-funded. This is waged to the monument being built by repressive forces and should be demolished without the need from taxes from the very people. It is currently offending. Thank you for donating your time to this endeavor and removing an emblem of hate. Seth Bellamy. As a direct descendant of Vance, removing the monument does not erase my family's legacy, but it does represent a small step toward repairing the harm my family legacy imposed upon the community, which I call home and I deeply love. On behalf of my family, I thank you for your work. Noah Nickel. I would like to see the Vance Monument removed. I think that it is cultural appropriation at its finest. I don't see how you would repurpose what it was originally erected for just by placing a plaque upon it or painting it some different colors. It's not going to change the nature of what it is and who it was erected for and what it, the obsolete, is meant to do throughout the Egyptian belief system. I do not believe that it should be kept in the form of fashion that it is. Robert Thomas." Next slide, please, which is our timeline. The task force then divided into three groups to look at the pros and the cons of each option, remove, relocate, and repurpose. We did this as if we were on a debate team and had to speak for both sides of the decision. The list of the pros and cons are in the longer report. These small group assignments were made randomly, and in a couple instances landed members in a position group they didn't originally support. This forced them to consider different perspectives and sides of the issues. We know this is a decision that will not fit everyone's preference. We especially were thinking of the youth and other people today and what they will need in 2070. We made this decision in light of these epic times to address the past and look forward to the future. Slide 12, the final recommendation. On November 19th, by a voice vote of 11 to 1, the task force recommended the removal of the Vance Monument, and that is just slide number 12.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. I'm going to pick up from here. This is Deborah Miles. And for the person that is operating the slide deck, could you move, I think it's two or maybe three more slides, I'll tell you when we're at the spot. Can I be reassured that somebody's moving the slide deck at the PowerPoint?
I think they're, they're working on it.
Okay.
All right.
Two more?
Two more.
Deborah, what do you want this slide to say?
What slide are you looking for, Deborah?
It is the statistics of the monuments across the South.
Okay. Okay, there we are. Is that it?
If she's watching it on Facebook, she's watching it on a delay.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, all right. Can you all give us statistics of the monuments across the South?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This recommendation is part of a national reckoning about racial equity and is 400 years in the making. We mismatched this moment. The Southern Poverty Law Center shares that prior to 2016, there were some 1,800 monuments, plaques, and buildings that honored the people and events of the Confederate States of America. About half of them are statues, mostly in the South. Since the brutal murders at Mother Emanuel in Charleston, 124 statues have come down, 59 since the murders of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, and so many others. 19 of those 59 have come down in North Carolina. Next slide. This should be a picture of an obelisk in Birmingham and Augusta. We are part of a national movement to end the myth of the lost cause, and this movement is growing. On December 2nd, a task force similar to ours in Augusta, Georgia, voted to recommend removal of a monument, also in the shape of an obelisk, from their town square. Other obelisks in Birmingham, Decatur, and New Orleans have already been removed. Next slide. This slide should list national and local organizations. National organizations are calling for these removals as well, including the NAACP, the Urban League, Black Veterans, and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Locally, the task force received letters of support from the Preservation Society, the Arts Council, Carolina Jews for Justice, and the Jewish Community Relations Council. This movement is gaining momentum. We do not want to be home to one of the last-standing monuments whose history is connected to a leader of the Confederate States of America. The task force reached out to potential sites for the possibility of relocation and quickly realized that the national conversation about relocating involves both logistics and complex reinterpretation for a new narrative. One central concern being that they could become pilgrimage sites for those who venerate the memory of the many aspects of the Confederacy and its current neo-Confederate admirers. We share the financial concerns that have been expressed. There are support organizations that are gearing up to meet this moment. The Mellon Monument Fund has committed $250 million to meet this moment. We believe there will be other funding sources, including our local Tourism Development Authority, as I believe this is a tremendous opportunity to retell our stories to tourists. Next slide, next steps. We are also charged with beginning a list of notable African-Americans and events related to our shared history, and would like to return on January 26th to the City of Asheville to present that list. We state that this will not be an all-inclusive list, rather only a beginning to work from. We also state that the task force wishes that the site and view inclusion for both the indigenous and Cherokee people who have lived here for 10,000 years, as well as the larger community of souls who make up our mountain home. We recommend to you that the repurposing of PACT Square be more than the footprint of the monument and be about place-making, from the plaza in front of what was once the whites-only PACT Memorial Library, now Asheville Art Museum, towards the front entrance of the Biltmore Building. We want this historic spot at the heart of our community to welcome all, both residents and visitors. We recommend to you that there be an educational component to reimagining of this public space, and suggests that the artists, ethicists, historians, and changemakers that the Mellon Foundation has organized is a good place to start on this complex reimagining at the heart of our mountain home. We recommend to you that this historic space, where the first courthouse was erected, where people were sold into enslavement, where the whites-only bathrooms and water fountains stood, where we have gathered, celebrated, protested, and more, be seen as a way to connect both residents and guests to our larger shared story through entrepreneurial activities across the region. Final slide. On behalf of the Vance Monument Task Force, we thank you for entrusting us with this responsibility, are humbled by the charge, and ask your support of our final recommendations. We are ready to take your questions.
All right, Ms. Simmons and Ms. Miles, thank you both so much for all of your dedicated work on this effort, as well as thanks to all the other members of the task force. You know, I think we were all very impressed when we went through the interview process on the county commission side at the number of people from throughout the county who were interested in serving on this task force, who brought a wealth of different ideas and experiences and insights to it. I think we all learned a lot just from the interviews with people who were interested in serving, and we had way more people interested in serving than we had positions available for it. So, we appreciate our thanks to everyone who served in this process to deliberate and get community input on these, these questions. So, Commissioners, are there any questions that folks would have or comments you would like to share at this time?
This is Jasmine Beach Ferrari. Hello, Ms. Simmons, Ms. Miles. I want to echo that gratitude, and when we passed the resolution co-creating this commission, it was clear that it was not just a large task that would need to be completed on a quick timeline, but a rigorous and layered one. And I just want to appreciate the way that you all have approached it, the volume of comments and the level of public participation far exceeds what we would typically see around public and community engagement. I think it speaks to the passion and perspective on this, and one thing I learned tonight that I hadn't realized was that small group exercise you used of having people actually potentially argue a perspective they did not hold. And it's one of the most refreshing things I've heard in a long time, especially on a night like this, I think, of how we try to stay together as a community even as we're making tough decisions together and decisions where we know that the conclusion will not be, will not satisfy everyone. But I think you created a big table, and you invited people to that table, and that table will stay. So I want to thank you all for that, and I am excited about the discussion ahead and excited about the actions to come as we act upon the recommendations that you've brought forth.
Are there any other Commissioners who would like to make a comment or have any
Yes, I will. I think with all the media exposure of this over the last couple of months, there's been some wrong information or false information or misleading that the Buncombe County Commissioners did not vote to tear the monument down. We put a task force together... We put a task force together to come up with the recommendations. Correct? And I think that needs to be addressed because the emails I'm getting is, why did you vote for it? We did not. It was a task force that voted to remove the Vance Monument. Now, I guess after talking with Avril earlier today, I think it needs to be explained of exactly how where everyone listening now can understand what the next procedures are exactly or our chairman or whoever. I think it needs to be documented very well of what's going to happen. That we are not going to tear it down. That was a recommendation from the task force. So chairman, take over.
Okay. One part of the process that I do think is really important for folks to recognize is that this task force was jointly created by the city council and county commission. We both appointed an equal number of residents from Asheville and Buncombe County to serve on this task force to look at the question about this public property and the future of this public property. And again, a great number of people applied to both of our bodies. And we had a great group of people to choose from who represented a wide range of views. I mean, I will, sure, we all agree from any of the folks who listened to the process. Not everyone who started off this process had the same perspective at all. There was, as people know, within the community, there is a wide range of views. And the folks who were appointed to this task force represented all these different views. So in the one other part of the process, I think, going forward, that is also important for folks to understand is that while it was a jointly created task force, we appointed some residents to serve in the process. So we're involved in the process because we helped create this task force. This monument is on property that is owned by the city of Asheville. So at the end of the day, the decisions about the use of that property and the monument that is there is a decision that the city council has the final jurisdiction and legal responsibility to make a decision on. But we have been part of the process because we helped appoint people to it. And so we're talking about it tonight. And we can have, you know, we can add our voices to it as well. But the city council is the ultimate decision maker on these recommendations that the task force has developed. So anyway, those are just a few of my thoughts about the process up to here and then also where it goes forward.
And I would like to thank the task force for a job well done. I didn't think you could complete it in the time you were given, especially when you look at COVID-19. We had one of the most important elections of our lifetime. And to get anybody to respond during that time, that was great because I know if most people were like me, even though I was living with your committee, my wife was on it. So I heard a lot about it and I watched a lot of it. But I know a lot of the people, I didn't think they were paying as much attention to it as they should because of what was going on then. But I want to thank all of you and Orlean and Debbie both, along with all the members of the committee. You all did, it was a good job. And I think now it's in our court and the city of Asheville to decide on where we go from here and what we do, you know, with it. So, but all I can say is, you know, from, as a commissioner, thank you for the job, a job well done. And I'm glad that we gave you the opportunity to come forward because I remember back in the '70s, I was on the committee to consolidate the school systems, and we voted for it. But we would never, I even have a plaque somewhere in a box. The county commissioners and the city council never looked at our report, and we worked on it for over a year, four years, yeah. But thank you. We appreciate what you've done.
Thank you for hearing us.
I would like to echo all of those comments. And thanks to the two of you for co-chairing and to the task force members. I have to share with you all that there was a task force member who went into this thinking they were going to have a different decision. And I spoke at length with the member after your all's vote several weeks ago. And it was, it was a really interesting conversation to hear because he said that he had never been a part of a conversation where it was okay to freely and openly discuss race and ask questions in a really safe environment. And what he left me with, though, was, he said, as a veteran, that the conversations that occurred and the ultimate decision that was made is exactly what he fought for as a member of the United States military. And he said it actually gave him hope for where we are as a nation now, that we can have these conversations respectfully and come to these kind of conclusions. So the impact that this task force has had on a number of its members, I don't think is lost on any of us sitting up here. So thank you all for providing just that opportunity to our community.
And I would also like to share some comments.
Sure thing.
Ms. Miles and Ms. Simmons, first of all, I want to acknowledge the dedication and thoughtful consideration that the people of this task force showed. I want you to know that over Thanksgiving, I watched all the recorded videos of your meetings, including the two evenings of call-in public comment, as well as reading through many of the submitted public comment emails. For our citizens who are interested in this important issue, I highly recommend you watch those videos that are available at the city of Asheville Communications website. I wanted to understand how you, the task force, arrived at your recommendations, and it helped me to see your journey. I hope it will help others understand your journey to this recommendation. It gave me hope to see people from diverse backgrounds and perspectives have an honest, challenging, and respectful conversations. I do believe that is what most of us want, and I sincerely believe it is the only way that we are going to move forward together and create the equitable, healthy, and safe community that we all want. I recognize that you were provided a very specific direction and scope with the joint city and county resolution to recommend action regarding the relocation, removal, and repurposing of the Vance Monument. And you have done an admirable job with what you were tasked to do. Thank you for your thoughtful service. As commissioner with a responsibility to all those I serve, I look forward to the ongoing due diligence that the county manager will be taking, especially around financial considerations expected from the county should the city choose to proceed. Additionally, my sincere hope for our community and county is that we foster an environment of inclusion, which invites the participation and contribution of all community members. Otherwise, we will continue to have strife and dissatisfaction. I realize that this takes more time than some would like. However, I think it is worth the effort. Based upon the public comment that the task force received and that I have personally received, it seems to me that the majority of people want the same end goal, that they just currently, or some have differing ideas of how to get there. Many prefer removal and some prefer repurposing. The end goal, they seem to agree upon. They want an educational space that tells the truth and an inclusive narrative that is a reflection of our entire community. They want to move forward together. And I acknowledge that monuments typically represent a particular version of history, and the fact that they are given prominence represents the power of that history. Let's ensure that we make wise decisions as we move forward together that will make our future generations proud. Thank you so much.
All right. Any other comments? Great. Commissioners, I'd like to, on the staff report for this item, there's a recommendation to accept the recommendations of the report and to ask our county manager to continue to coordinate with the management on the city side for looking at, you know, more of the details of how next steps could be taken on this. So I wanted to suggest a motion that's essentially that, but maybe building in a couple of the points that we discussed too, in the hopes of just making sure we're clear with the community about kind of how the process will work going forward. And the role that we, while we're not the final legal decision maker on this, we are part of the process and kind of expressing the idea that we want to be supportive. So let me, I'd like to propose something. And I'm happy to read this again so make sure it's clear and everyone's hearing the different components to it. So I'd like to make a motion that the county commission accepts a recommendation from the Vance Monument Task Force and requests that the county manager coordinate with the city staff to identify next steps in the process. The county commission expresses its appreciation to the members of the task force for their hard work on behalf of the community. And then here's the additional pieces I would want to add that are not in the staff report. The commission acknowledges that the final decision about the future of this important public land will be determined by the Asheville City Council. The county commission is prepared to consider additional support, if needed, to implement plans for the future of this property as they are determined. So that's the motion I'd like to make. I'd be happy, again, to kind of reread that to make sure it's, everyone's clear since I tried to write, I tried to write something up before the meeting, but I realize other folks haven't heard this yet.
I second the motion.
Okay. Further discussion or any questions on the motion? Sure. Be happy to, be happy to. The county commission, and again, this first part is basically just drawing from the staff report that's published on the agenda. The county commission accepts the recommendation from the Vance Monument Task Force and requests that the county manager coordinate with city staff to identify next steps in the process. The county commission expresses its appreciation to the members of the task force for their hard work on behalf of the community. And then here's the new parts. First, that the county commission acknowledges that the final decision about the future of this important public land will be determined by the Asheville City Council and that the county commission is prepared to consider additional support, if needed, to implement future plans, to implement plans for the future of this public property. In essence, I'm just trying to summarize, make it clear. We're not the legal decision maker, but we want to be supportive of the process going forward.
I like that.
And we accept the recommendation.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah. I was just going to say, I think it's important that someone that just got elected to kind of acknowledge and convey to the public that, you know, I don't think that a monument to that person, to Zebulon Vance, is appropriate or ethical. And so I would very much support the recommendations of the task force. I think that's, I think that motion you read works. I don't know that we need to add anything to that to kind of convey that message, but I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, I think that probably gets it all out clear. And you will keep us updated of what's going on. And I guess the main thing I wanted the public to know that we did make a decision and we most likely or will not make the decision what happens, correct?
The city council is
City council.
It's on their property. So they are the jurisdiction that is responsible for it. The county commission doesn't have any legal authority to determine what happens on the property because we don't have an ownership interest in it. So we're, we have a voice in the process, but we're not a decision maker on the use of the property or the monument that's on there currently.
Okay.
That's right.
Yeah. Oh, that's clear.
Yeah.
I think just, again, just so we're cleaning everything up, I think a point to clarify is just in the original resolution, we really did clarify that the county would act on county land, the city would act on city land.
Yeah.
And this is consistent with that. So it's very much consistent with the resolution we passed this summer. And that in this case, our role would be a supportive one. So maybe I'm just saying what's been said a slightly different way or the same way again, but.
All right. If there's no other comments, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Ms. Simmons, Ms. Miles, again, thank you to both of you. And I know you're going to be talking with folks on the city council in the coming days. And so thank you again for all your work on this to date and for your continued, your continued good work.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Stay safe.
Have a good evening.
Okay. We have just one other item of new business, which is the item that we added, Mr. Frue, regarding code enforcement.
Oh, yeah. I forgot. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you. This is an add-on. As we all know, and we've read recently, there's been a lot of efforts lately to figure out how to enforce the governor's executive orders and local declarations of state of emergency. And when we were looking into that, we opened up the county ordinance, the fire prevention and protection ordinance, and just saw a couple of things that might need to be, that we're suggesting that this board approve by amending the ordinance. One is first, and Max may not be able to, can you pull up that Word document, please? And while that's coming up, I mean, the first change clarifies the fire marshals designated are connected with their enforcing and the administration of the fire prevention ordinance of the building code. So that is requested to be added. And the second element under the current ordinance is on the violation and penalty 30-44. Currently, that provides for a $50 criminal penalty. And we are requesting the board add that violations of this building code fire prevention ordinance may also be punishable by a civil penalty. First offense of $50 fine. Thank you, Max, for this, right there. Second offense would be $100 fine and third offense 500. That last paragraph emphasizes what currently exists in the fire prevention code, that upon finding of an imminent hazard overcrowding, it's termed, the fire marshal is designated is authorized to order the evacuation of the building premises or portion thereof to abate the overcrowded condition. This isn't limited to COVID-19. We ask for these changes just to broaden the efforts and enforceability of the fire prevention ordinance of the building code by the fire marshal's office. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer.
Is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Or a question? All right, there's motions or second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Frue.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes our, we don't have any board appointments, do we? To discuss? Or do we? Do we have, do we have any board appointments to discuss tonight, Mr. Joyner?
But I do have some questions and some information that probably needs to be thought about. The first thing is the Strategic Partnership Grants Committee. We opened the application process back up for, to get some new diverse applicants. We received three more applications for a total of six applications. A little bit more diversity. I think it's the urgency to kind of try to fill that position soon. So just wanted to see when y'all wanted to possibly conduct interviews.
So why don't we conduct interviews on the, maybe the Tuesday of our meeting in January? Does that work for everybody? Does, is there, no, I always forget, though. And we, didn't we talk about, did I dream this? We talked about establishing a regular time, this is a conversation with Avril, to have a regular time for board interviews.
I'll be quite a dream.
I think about a lot of county stuff, like, are we going to have this meeting or not? So the idea, the idea is just establish a regular time for interviews of boards and commission applicants so we're not constantly kind of thinking about what's the right time to do that. So Ms. Pender, could you just share that thought since I'm not doing a great job of it?
You're doing fine. We talked about maybe that first meeting of the month, so that first Tuesday.
Okay. Okay.
We can set time aside because I think we conflict with the early childhood third meeting
Okay.
Of the month.
We're the first Tuesday every month, 1:00 to 2:30.
Okay, so then the third meeting.
We're not meeting the fifth.
So. Not January 5th, but
We're not meeting
We're first Tuesday.
So, we can go ahead with that first Tuesday, but then after that, it would be the off meeting, so we don't always conflict in between early childhood. So, it'd be the third Tuesday of the month starting in February.
And what would be the times for that, starting at?
We thought about 12 o'clock or 1 o'clock. So, we can do it 1:00 and then you would be done in time to start your 3:00 meeting.
Because we won't be meeting, so.
Right.
And by the way, it also depends on the amount of applicants, um, on when we should start, but I would say 12 o'clock gives us a, a good opportunity to get those in if there's a, a lot of applicants. But in this situation, there are only six applicants.
So, let's think about that for just a moment, if, if that's okay. So, we're talking about a, a meeting once a month to do interviews. Doesn't, and at a regular time, that we don't have conflicts. If we, if we started at 12, that would give us three hours, which would certainly probably be adequate. The only downside of that is, I would say, probably in most cases, we don't really need nearly that much time, which means people would, we'd be coming over, having a meeting, and then likely there'd be, um, you know, a lot of time left over. So, do we want to try noon or do we want to try, we could do 1:00?
Also, let me say this.
Yeah.
Um, we would still have to notice this as a special meeting, so we do have some flexibility to decide what time we're going to meet. This would just be a structured standing meeting on the third Tuesday of each month, but we can make, uh, adjustments if we need to.
I would, I would kind of suggest maybe we do 1:00. And then if we have a really long list, we can always give ourselves more time. But otherwise, I feel like we're just going to be driving back and forth from the county building to other stuff we have to do that day. So, why don't we, why don't we try 1:00 to start? Great.
So, are we saying for January the 5th, we're going to do 1:00 or do you want?
Well, so for that one, do we expect to have any other than the strategic partners?
Not at this point, no. There are no other interviews.
Six interviews, we need an hour for that. We could probably get by with doing it at 2:00 or at least 1:30. Why don't we try 1:30 for that particular meeting? All right. Very good.
And one other item.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I think, um, we need to, I think you sent an email about discussion of the Blue Horizons Community Council, um, about having an appointment. You wanted to talk about that in December. So, I don't know if you still are interested in that conversation.
So, at our first meeting in January, Ms. Pender, are we going to be reviewing the board and commission appointments for all of the county?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's just take it at best part of that conversation.
Sure.
So, that'll be the first meeting in January. We'll review all the boards and commissions that county commissioners serve on or serve as a liaison to or, or whatever. And we'll, um, so everyone be thinking about that. You know, some folks, of course, we're all serving on things now, or at least the returning members. So, if there's things you want to keep serving on, uh, if everyone could just kind of make a list of what you would be interested in. And then, um, the staff and I'll try to talk with everyone so we can kind of go in there knowing what folks are interested in, and then we'll, we'll make those decisions. All right. Great. And we do have a need for a closed session. Let me make these announcements first. On December 10th at noon, the county commissioners will hold a budget retreat at AB Tech Community, AB Tech Community College, 24 Canoe Lane. Okay. Okay, right. In, in the town of Woodfin, right. Thank you. I was like, where's 24 Canoe Lane? Okay, at the training center. Thank you. On January 5th at 3:00 PM, the commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. And on January 5th at 5:00 PM, the commissioners will hold a regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. And as we just mentioned, on January 5th at 1:30 PM, we'll do a special meeting to do interviews with boards and commission members. We have a need for another closed session.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can I have one more point of clarity? Earlier, we spoke about canceling the meeting in December and we said canceling the December the 22nd meeting. We need to make clear that it's the, it would be the December the 15th meeting that we would be canceling because that would be the third Tuesday. Because we moved this opposite.
Okay.
So, we need to make that
Let's, let's remake, let's remake the motion, just to clarify that. So, I'll make a motion to cancel the meeting on December 15th.
All right.
All right, there's a motion and second. And this is just to clarify, we may have incorrectly said the date of it in the previous motion. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Now, we do have a need for another closed session on a different topic. Ms. Hockaday, can you explain this item?
Thank you, Lamarr. Members of the commission, we have actually two more legal matters to address. So, we'll need a motion on those. And then we have two economic development matters, which will be under a separate provision. So, the first motion, uh, we'll need, will be to enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143 dash 318 point 11A4 for the public body to consult with a retained attorney on legal matters. The first matter is Matt Mahan v. Duncan et al. It's a federal case in the Western District of North Carolina, one, Column 119, CV 339. The second matter will be Malvern Hills Neighborhood Association et al. versus Buncombe County, the Buncombe County Board of Adjustment and Catalyst Capital Partners LLC at 20 CBS 3881.
Okay, so that's the first motion.
Right.
And so we'll do two separate motions?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to go into closed session for the two legal items that Ms. Hockaday just referenced? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
And then the next motion will be to discuss economic matters. So, we need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143 dash 318 point 11A6 to discuss two matters related to economic development located within the area served by the public body.
Is there a motion to approve?
So, move.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are going into closed session. When we return from closed session, we do not anticipate taking any actions on these matters tonight. We will simply adjourn the meeting.